Hello, everybody, and welcome to the Monticello Central School District Board of Education meeting, our regular meeting. We just finished executive session. I'd like to remind everybody that this is being recorded, and as well as the fact that, obviously, the ability to have public session and public comment can't be done within this format, so we do have a way for you to be able to contact us by just reaching our board clerk, who is Jay Montez, or, well, it's Janet Montez, and the email that you would get her at is jmontez@k12mcst.net. With that said, we are coming out of executive session, and at this time, I would like to start off with our pledge. So, please rise if you're able to. I pledge allegiance to Thank you very much. There's a lot of things I enjoy doing as a board member, and I have the honor of doing some wonderful things as board president. However, this is not one of the things that I enjoy doing. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for two of our former students that have a unique connection to our Monticello family through their extended family as well. First is, we lost a student who graduated, I believe, two years ago. Devin Hausman was an incredible, bright-spirited, warm soul who brought a smile to anybody who knew him. He was just always such a positive human being and had so much to look forward to in life. And under a sad state of events, we lost him a couple of weeks ago. The uniqueness of that is our hearts and minds are with his mother and his entire family, but Yvonne Hausman served on our school board for many, many years, and we wanted to take a moment to pay tribute to Devin. Our other is Erin Gary. Erin Gary was an incredible student. She was involved in everything. She was the top of her class. She was an inspiration to anybody who knew her. She went away to college and found that when she started college, that her original career path was not what she really wanted. She had gotten some experience in the education field, and she became an educator. And she became an English teacher in a school in the middle of the Bronx. That was a school that was a need because she felt that that was where her services could best be suited for her to make a difference. She moved up through that district and continued on becoming a principal a number of years ago. Erin was involved in music and athletics, and the thing that I remember best about Erin was her ability to walk into a room and make anybody smile. And again, by extension, her family, her father was our athletic director for very many years. Ken Gary, our hearts and minds are with you. Diane, John Gary, and Megan, and the extended family, we are at a loss of words in being able to pay correct respect to Erin and what she did for students and created the legacy of why any of us are even here today. So I'd like to ask for a moment of silence in memory of both of those amazing human beings and, again, our prayers Thank you. I'd like to remind everybody to please silence any electronic devices. I'll entertain a motion now to move the agenda to, oh, excuse me, we're going to actually do the public comment first. So I'm going to do a motion to recess for the code of conduct public hearings. So do I have a motion to recess at this time? Made by Mr. Cromley, seconded by Mrs. Van Etten. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? So ordered. So, code of conduct. Dr. Silver?
The code of conduct's been revised by the principals in various committees. There are just some minor changes this year. I know Linda had something she wanted to add, so I'll ask her to chime in and then poll. Any comments? Does he really lead this effort?
Sure. So that one change that we just added was at the request of the middle school and the high school principal. Based on our uncertainty as to how we will start the year, they asked that we add that secondary students would no longer be allowed to have head coverings because if students also have to wear masks, concerned safety-wise that we would not be able to identify students.
Well, do you want to give some background, just overall on the process and the next steps?
Yeah, so every year, there's an obligation for the district to conduct a review of the code of conduct. There's no requirement to change the code of conduct, and so this happens to be a year, notwithstanding the change that Linda just mentioned, this happens to be a year where we might have done multiple occasions, but really, other than some minor changes having to do with pens, petitions, and things of that nature, there was really no desire to make any changes, major changes. So the document that you see before you today is very much the same as the one from last year, and then I guess there would be the changes regarding the head covering for the middle and high school.
So at this time, Ms. Montez, I'm going to ask, are there any questions that have been emailed into you? It'll take like 30 seconds, a minute, to see if anybody responds and has any questions.
Okay. Right now, I don't have anything.
We'll just give a couple of seconds, just in case someone is typing away.
While we're waiting, Linda, could you explain a little more about the head covering problem and the masks together?
Sure. Yeah, we were just concerned that, you know, in the past, we had allowed head covering, but we were concerned if we do go back to school and students are required to wear masks, that there'd be very little identifying features that would be visible to anybody who needed to identify.
Got it. Got it, got it, got it, got it, got it.
Okay, so if there is anybody who does send an email, Janet, just please let us know, and we can always come back to it to make sure that it gets answered, so there's no problem. Based upon that information, anything around this table where anybody has any questions regarding? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to close this public hearing made by Ms. Gallagher, seconded by Ms. Holmes. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? So ordered. So we will reconvene our meeting at this time. Entertain a motion to move the agenda to the table made by Ms. Jersey, seconded by Ms. Sharoff. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? So ordered. Any addition, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Dr. Silver?
Ma'am.
So I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda made by Ms. Gallagher, seconded by Mrs. Van Etten. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? So ordered. Approval of minutes of June 4th. Motion to Ms. Jersey, seconded by Ms. Sharoff. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? So ordered. Approval of minutes of June 12th. Motion by Mr. Cromley, seconded by Ms. Gallagher. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? So ordered. Approval of minutes of June 17th, made by Mrs. Sharoff, seconded by Ms. Gallagher. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? So ordered. I'm sorry I skipped because I'm not used to doing it in this format so much, but both Mr. Groden and Mrs. Doherty are not on tonight's meeting. They had other obligations and such. So student board member updates. So we've got tag team here today by two incredible young ladies. So who would like to go first, or both of you simultaneously?
I will go first. So I really just have senior updates because that's what's been going on. June 9th through 12th, seniors were given the chance to celebrate graduation with their family as they walked across the stage, as well as got to sign their names on the senior mural. And I'd like to give a thank you to all the teachers who coordinated the event. It worked so smoothly. My grandma kept talking about how wonderful it was, how nice the teachers were, and how personalized it was, and it was very special to all the seniors, so.
We're glad that it worked and that you found that special moment for, considering the circumstance. Jenna, how about you?
Um, there's really not that much happening today. Seniors picked up yearbooks, and last week, there was the parade for everyone, so that was very nice. Other than that, there's not much.
So I just want to remind everybody that they can all see the full graduation put together. The link will be uploaded tomorrow to the district website, and at 1:00 on June 28th, which is Sunday, you will officially officially graduate, and I know that the video put together has some wonderful moments as well. So we're looking forward to the entire class signing in with their family and friends, and the best part about this is people from California can even sign in and watch all of you graduate. On behalf of the board, we are so proud of this class. We are grateful, very grateful, to the graduation committee for all of the work that they did to make this something special for you and something that was memorable. You know, we are a big school. We didn't have the opportunities that others did when they released the ability to do some outdoor stuff, but I will tell you, if you drive around our school district, this community has painted the town blue. It's all over the place. Houses are blue. There's blue and white ribbons. It's just so awe-inspiring to see. Cars are decorated, and that's to let you guys know how special you are and how proud we are of you. So, Sydney?
I forgot to add that seniors were given lawn signs, and they're just so special. Like, I'll be driving around in Monticello or in Bethel, like wherever, because we're such a big district, and I'll be like, oh, my God, like, someone in my class lives there. It's just so cool. I love it.
It's not over yet. We still have more to do on Sunday, but we want to make sure that you know how special you are and how proud we are of you. So I'd also like to take this moment to thank Sydney and Jenna both. They've served in a very unique role for their classmates, for the school building itself, as well as the school district. Not the way we wanted to end our service with you, but you have been both a pleasure and an honor to work with. You, you know, you have places to go in the future, and we can't wait to see what you will do. But we do know that advocating for your colleagues, for your friends, for what is right, for your building and for your community is something that both of you have done exceptionally well. We're proud of your service. We hope you've got our little gift to you and that you will use it as you travel on through your career and think of us fondly. We will make sure that you get your name placards, if that has not already been sent to you, so you'll have your board member name placards as well. And we thank you for everything that you've done, and we're sending you a lot of hugs because that's what we would normally do right now. So congratulations. Best in your future, and come back to Monticello. Visit us often.
We will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on from there, board awards. So board awards this year have been a little bit different in the scope that years, a year ago, we used to do that the superintendent read off everything. But the superintendent and the board wasn't necessarily the people who nominated the people, and we felt it was very, very important that if someone was being nominated to the board for consideration for a board award, that that person should have the ability to share their feelings and their thoughts with us. So we've asked our high school principal, Mr. Wilder, who had a couple of nominees for staffing today. We did send to our athletic teams, I signed a stack, and Mrs. Sharoff signed a stack of certificates that went out so that our students were recognized, but we do have some special individuals that Mr. Wilder wanted to take a moment. So, Mr. Wilder, you're on.
Thank you very much. So I have a couple of individuals that are receiving Board of Education awards. I would like to begin with Mrs. Rose Joyce Turner. At the beginning of the year, Rose Joyce Turner supported our preparations for and facilitation of our Aspire program. Rose identified areas of improvement and worked to fill those gaps to improve timely responses to student infractions while creating opportunities for those same students to become a better version of themselves. Rose regularly committed extra time and effort to ensuring the program was staffed and operating effectively. As the year progressed, we faced a new challenge in the form of the COVID-19 pandemic. As we transitioned to a new type of work and service, Rose transitioned to a role on the building leadership team to assist with the creation, communication, and facilitation of the new school-wide tasks and responsibilities. When we found ourselves without a building leader due to injury, Rose stepped in again and provided additional communication, collaboration, and support so our teachers and staff remain connected and successful in the completion of their tasks and responsibilities. Rose coordinated the distribution and collection of student materials, sent communication home to families, and contributed to the planning, preparation, and facilitation of our graduation ceremonies. We are grateful to have Rose on our team and appreciate all her additional contributions. Rose is helping us to advance our mission of providing each student with the academic, social, and emotional skills they need to be life-ready. Rose continues to be a valued member of the Monticello team and family. Her actions are in keeping with the high expectations we have for our professionals in the Monticello Central School District. Congratulations.
And I just want to remind people that these folks are on the public portion of the meeting, so they're hearing and seeing all our reactions. So congratulations, Rose.
Next, we have Mrs. Ann Hazelness. Ann Hazelness is a consummate professional whose contributions to the Monticello community have been briefly summarized already in her nomination for the Sullivan County Outstanding Educator Award. Her extraordinary effort and commitment have not been diminished in the slightest with her impending retirement at the conclusion of this school year. As the co-graduation coordinator, Ann continued her relentless professional effort for hours, days, and weeks to contribute to that generation of ideas, planning, coordination, and facilitation of what came to be our individual graduation ceremonies for the class of 2020. Her years of dedicated commitment to our graduation ceremonies was instrumental in determining effective and actionable solutions for us to consider and choose from. The result was the planning and implementation of a meaningful and memorable graduation ceremony for our students and their family and friends. Ann will be retiring following the completion of this school year. For 33 years of dedicated service to Monticello community, her actions have been in keeping with the high expectations we have for our professionals in the Monticello Central School District. Thank you, Ann, and congratulations.
Thank you, Ann, for all of your service and well-earned honor.
Next, we have Mrs. Anna Eastep. She is a teacher in the high school and also was an administrative intern. As an administrator intern working towards her building and district-level leadership certification, Anna Eastep has demonstrated contributions above and beyond what would be expected. Her significant contributions during our school closure as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic improved quality and clarity of communication, planning, and implementation of school-wide efforts. Anna participated in daily collaborative leadership meetings, provided review and revisions of critical communications to faculty, staff, students, and parents. Anna regularly took on projects such as putting together the blue and white ceremony video, the virtual student of distinction award ceremony, coordinating when and how teachers could access their classrooms for end-of-year packing and preparations for the renovation project, and multiple tasks related to other school-wide efforts. Anna worked day, evening, and weekends beyond her program requirements, demonstrating a sincere and committed work ethic reflective of who she is as a person. Her specific recommendations, revisions, planning, collaboration, and coordination added great value to our school-wide successful efforts to respond to the needs of our school community during an unprecedented period of time. Anna continues to be a valued member of the Monticello team and family. Her actions are in keeping with the high expectations we have for our professionals in the Monticello Central School District. Anna, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, Anna, for all of your service this year. Thanks.
And next, we would like to recognize Mrs. Cheryl Mans, guidance counselor at the high school. Cheryl Mans has loyally served the Monticello community for 39 years. This past year, Cheryl has again served as the department instructional leader for the high school guidance department, the co-master scheduler, and the co-graduation coordinator. Given the unique circumstances presented by our school closure as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, Cheryl's dedicated experience in leadership was pivotal in our coordinated response to best meet the needs of our school community. As the department instructional leader for our guidance department, Cheryl facilitated daily department meetings at the beginning of the closure and weekly department meetings as the closure progressed. Cheryl enlisted the expertise of her department members to develop and implement creative solutions. She consistently collaborated with, advised, and worked with building leadership to accomplish critical tasks associated with student needs. Her efforts resulted in exceptional departmental outreach and support to our students and families. As the co-master scheduler, Cheryl expended many additional hours creating solutions for the space constraints we are facing because of our capital improvement project. Her collaborative efforts have resulted in dependable solutions for helping to maximize our time, talent, and passion school-wide to best influence student success and meet student interests. When confronted with the challenge of planning and implementing a meaningful and memorable graduation ceremony under uncertain and evolving circumstances and requirements, Cheryl once again rose to the occasion. As the co-graduation coordinator, Cheryl endeavored on a collaborative journey to reimagine what a graduation ceremony could be during a pandemic. Cheryl demonstrated a relentless effort for hours, days, and weeks to contribute to the generation of ideas, planning, coordination, and facilitation of what came to be our individual graduation ceremonies. Her years of dedicated commitment to our graduation ceremonies was instrumental in determining effective and actionable solutions. Cheryl continues to be a valued member of the Monticello team and family. Her ongoing, reliable, and committed leadership continues to demonstrate how irreplaceable her individual contributions are. Her actions are in keeping with and regularly exceed the high expectations we have for our professionals in the Monticello Central School District. Cheryl, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you so much, Cheryl, and just amazing, amazing work by these folks. Thank you.
And the final nomination goes to Mr. Stephen Lewis. He is the director of our facilities. Stephen Lewis juggles many competing priorities as the director of facilities for the Monticello Central School District. He consistently has multiple demands for his time and attention to resolve challenges that arise and programs or events to set up for. Stephen's collaboration and effort supporting the needs and wants at the high school have always been approached with professionalism, candor, and solutions-focused. During the school closure as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, Stephen demonstrated the ability to quickly adjust his and his team's efforts to meet a variety of new needs from the high school. His collaborative and decisive leadership allowed for the successful facilitation of multiple distributions and collections of student materials, the preparation for our building renovation project, and the successful facilitation of our graduation ceremonies. A common refrain from Stephen was, "Whatever you need, we will make it happen", and "Happy to do it." Stephen's responsive leadership allowed for many other professionals to be successful and safe in their tasks and responsibilities. Stephen is a respected and valued member of the Monticello team and family. His actions are in keeping with the high expectations we have for our leaders in the Monticello Central School District. Stephen, thank you and congratulations.
Again, thank you so much to all of your awardees. They certainly have well-earned it, and we thank you for nominating them. We thank you for signing on, and we're hoping that some people will stay because we still have some other recognitions throughout today's meeting as our last meeting of this official school year. So with that said, again, I will remind people that are here, it is pouring out in my neck of the woods, and we live in the country, so if I lose you, I will sign back in. So, Mrs. Sharoff, you may have to take over the meeting for a little bit, so. But with that said, Mrs. Sharoff, do you have anything that you would like to do?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we approve consent agenda items F1 to M2.
Second on that, made by Mr. Cromley. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? So ordered. Moving on from there, board roundtables. Does anyone have anything that they would like to share? Mrs. Van Etten? Mrs. Van Etten, could I ask a favor? Can you just wait till I get to you? I'm going to come back to you, okay? I'm going to go first, if that's all right. Okay. So any other board members who need to share? Okay, so Mr. Cromley, you have something you'd like to share at board roundtable?
No. I thought we had adopted the consent agenda, then approved the consent agenda. Or am I off on that jazz? Okay.
That's on the action items.
Okey-dokey.
We are still good. So, okay, so a couple of things that went on that I had done this past week, we did a board orientation, both Mrs. Sharoff and myself, along with Dr. Silver. We did a board orientation with our newest school board member, who I know is in the public session right now and will be joining us at the table next. So Adriana Greco, we welcome you aboard. And I also attended, quasi-attended, but actually wound up having to listen to the recording because we had some issues with me being able to sign on for the NISBA budget webinar. A lot of good information was there. I do know that Dr. Evans was also attending that particular webinar, and a lot of good information was able to be discussed based on that. I was very proud. I was on a national panel this week for National Association for Music Education, their collegiate summit on advocating in education in COVID times, and it was great to work with so many of the college students from around the country, and we had 75 people sign on, and it was just, it was amazing. So that was great. I attended the NISBA Executive Council meeting via Zoom. I say I'm attending these things, but I'm really not. It's all in Zoom land. I attended the reopening of schools regional task force meeting. I was glad to be part of that. I'd like to report back out to the board. There were 350 people who were on that conference call, and yet it was organized. So we had presentations from the state with regard to the virus itself and concerns, you know, the reality, the facts, the scientific facts, and we went in from there with regard to social-emotional learning, not only of our students, but our families, and our faculty, and staff, and administrators, and school board members. So there was discussion around that and how we have to be aware of that as part of the process of reopening. We were then broken out into many groups that consisted of about 10 to 15 people each. We were each assigned out of nine different areas. They were from social-emotional learning to teaching and learning to facilities and transportation, you name it, budgeting. They had nine different areas. I served on one for teaching and learning. I spoke very, very strongly on behalf of this district on the following things. Teaching and learning, how do you make it happen? With regard to if we do With Regard To If We Do It In Person, How Does That Happen? How Do We Put Eleven Students On A Bus For Social Distancing? How Do We Do That With Budgetary Constraints Knowing That We Were One Of Eleven Budgets Across New York State? That Did Not Pass By A Very Slim Margin, But It's A Fact. If We Go To Contingency And We Have All Those Additional Things, What Would That Look Like? And That's Before We Know What The Cuts Are Coming From The Governor. So There's A Lot Of Concern Around That. I Spoke With Regard To The Fact Of If We Have To Switch Midstream, What Would That Look Like? Is It A Reality For Us To Have Students Back In September, And What Might That Look Like? So There Was A Lot Of Dialogue Around That. The Other Thing That I Did A Lot About Is Actually Three Things. Equity And Access, Which Is A Major Issue In Our Community. The Ability For Broadband. We Have Board Members Who Can't Get On To These Meetings Because They Don't Have Access. We Have A Lot Of That For Our Students With Regard To Our Faculty. Many Of Our Faculty Members Had To Go And On Their Own Purchase Their Own Computers And Laptops And Things Of That Nature Because We Just Didn't Have Enough Equipment For Them To Have What They Needed And What Their Children May Be Needing When Their Children Were Also Trying To Attend Or A Spouse Trying To Attend Work Via An Online Approach. So You Know, What Would That Look Like If That Was To Be The Scenario? What Would Summer Look Like For Us To Close Achievement Gaps? And Going Into The Achievement Gaps, I Spoke Very, Very Adamantly About The Fact That Learning Is More Than Just, As We Used To Say, You Know, The Reading, Writing, And Arithmetic. We Teach Our Students Far More Than That, And They Need, In This Setting, They Need Far More Than That. And I Made Clear On Behalf Of This Board As Well As The Different Hats That I Wear At The State And The National Level Of Those Concerns. The Links Will Be Available On The State Education Department Website. There's A Lot To Sift Through. There's Four Different Regional Meetings Plus The Breakout Sessions, And Of Those Breakout Sessions, Three Hundred And Fifty, You Do The Math Broken Down. So There's A Lot To Listen To And Hear What People Were Saying Across The State. I Will Keep You Posted As I Hear More Information On The Reopening. I Attended The Salt Meeting Via Zoom. I Want To Thank The Members Of Salt Who Are Out There Ensuring That Wonderful Things Are Happening Still For Our Community, Our Students And Our Families. They're Making Sure That Where There Are Needs Beyond What The School Is Able To Do For Food Services And Doctoral Service, You Know, Doctor, Seeing Doctors And Getting Those Types Of Things Done. The Members Of Salt Are Coming Forward And Making Sure That That Happens. I Thank Marty Calavito And Tom Baskett For Their Work On That Committee. I Was Proud To Do A Graduation Speech. So Again, June Twenty-Eighth, Be Able To Come In. I Didn't Really Do A Speech. I Kind Of Just Did The Acceptance Of Their Diplomas On Behalf Of The Board, Which Makes Their Diplomas Actually Official. The Eighth Grade Moving Up, I Did A Little Mini Speech For That, And If You Have Not Seen That, I Recommend You Go On That. All The Other Schools Also Did Moving Up. We Did Kindergarten Graduations And Fifth Grade Graduations. And I Want To Thank All Of The Administration, Teachers, And Many Of The Parents, PTA Members And Things Of That Nature Who Got Together To Make These Moments Special For Our Students. With That Said, I'd Like To Also Take This Opportunity, And I'm Hoping That Some Of These People Are Still On Board. Tonight Would Have Been The Night That Our School Board Would Have Spent Some Time With Our Many Retiring Members Of Our Monticello Family. So We Know That You Have Either Gotten Your Plaque Or Your Plant, But That Doesn't Go Enough To Say How Much We Will Miss Every Single One Of You. So We'd Like To Just Take A Moment For A Special Shout-Out For Kevin O'Shea, Fiscal Education Teacher Who Was With Our District From September Nineteen Ninety To June Thirtieth Of Twenty Twenty Twenty. Harriet Devers, School Psychologist, PPS And KLR, Who Was With Us From Nineteen Ninety-One Till Now. Shannon Cabrera, An Elementary Teacher, KLR, Who Was With Us From Nineteen Ninety-Nine To Today. Bill Reed, Sixth Grade Teacher, Science In The Middle School. Started In Nineteen Ninety-Eight, And He Again, To Today. It Was A Pleasure To Be A Part Of His Hiring Committee. I'm Glad To See That He's Lasted This Long. So We Thank You. Elizabeth Cleary, An E&amp;L Teacher In The Middle School. Started With Us In Nineteen Ninety-Seven And Retired This Past March Twenty Twenty. Mr. Gary Silverman, Science Teacher In The Middle School. He's With Us From Nineteen Eighty-Six Until Today. I Started A Little Bit Before Gary Because I'm Actually A Year Older Than Gary. And He Came On With Me. We Had Great Times In The Middle School. But What's Unique About Gary Is Anyone That Knew Him Loved Him, And He Was An Amazing Teacher And Is An Amazing Teacher. And We Look Forward To What He Has To Offer In The Future From Nineteen Eighty-Six To Twenty Twenty. Thank You So Much. Dennis Pasquale. He Is An LAN Technician. Basically, He Works In Our IT Department. And If You Are Smart And You Know How To Find Him, You Could Always Find Him On A Drumtrap Set Down In The Music Department Periodically During His Lunchtime. So We Thank Him. He Started In Two Thousand With Us And Is Retiring In July Of Twenty Twenty. Karen Stewart, An Elementary Teacher From KLR. Started With Us In Nineteen Ninety-Nine And Is Here With Us Until June Thirtieth. Ann Hazelness. You Just Heard Wonderful Words From Mr. Wilder About Ann Hazelness. Ann Started A Little Bit After Me As Well. We Became Fast Friends, And She Was Such An Asset To The High School. And I Know She Will Find A Way In Retirement To Still Be Around Because That's Ann. So We Thank Her Very Much From Nineteen Eighty-Seven To June Thirtieth Of This Year. Deborah Hines, Also A Fellow Former Classmate Of Monte High. A Lot Of Monte People Come Back And Work Here In Our District, And We're So Proud Of That. She Was An Attendance Officer And Made The Job What It Really Needed To Be Because She Took Over From Somebody Who I Used To See In The Offices All The Time. And When Debbie Came On Board, Man, She Was All Over This District, Making Sure Kids Were Coming To School And Making Sure The Parents Had Means To Get Them Here. And She Has Never Stopped. She's Just An Incredible Employee For Our District And A Wonderful Member Of Our Community. From Nineteen Eighty-Nine To She Will Be Retiring On September First Of Twenty Twenty. Sorry, I Had To Scroll A Little Bit Further. So Just Give Me A Half A Second. Ronnie Feaster, A Teacher's Aid At The High School Who's Been With Us Since From Nineteen Eighty-Nine. She Retired. She Just Recently Retired Eight Thirty Nineteen, So She's Been Gone For This Year, But We Still Recognize Her Because She Was In This Fiscal School Year For The School District. Ronnie Was An Incredible Human Being Up At The High School And Had A Way To Just Make Sure That Every Special Needs Kid That She Had Her Hand On Knew That They Were Cared For. So Olga Wagner, Teaching Assistant In KLR. Has Been With Us Since Nineteen Ninety-Nine, Retiring Also In Twenty Twenty. And So We Appreciate All Of Her Time As A Teaching Assistant. Julia Serrano, Teacher In The Cook School. Retiring Also June Thirtieth. She Started In Nineteen Eighty-Nine. And We Are Sad To See Her Go And Wish Her Well. Joyce Wells, Music Teacher For KLR. Will Be Retiring As Of July First. She's Been With Us Since Two Thousand And, Excuse Me, Yeah, Two Thousand And Four. And She Was A Wonderful Asset And Brought Some Wonderful Programs To Us. And The One That I Remember Most Is When She Brought The Infamous Ann Hampton Calloway To Work With Our Students. And That Ann Hampton Calloway Actually Wrote An Anthem For Our Fourth Grade Choir, And They Sang It, And She Published It. And Just Amazing. For Those Of You Who Don't Know Who Ann Hampton Calloway Is, If You've Ever Seen The Nanny, She Wrote The Theme Song To The Nanny. Not To Mention That She's Written Things For Barbra Streisand, And She's Just Amazing. She's A Grammy Award Winning. Incredible, And I Believe Tony Award Winning Musician. And Last But Not Least, Amy Phillips. She Started Nineteen Eighty-Two. She Retired In November Of This Past Year. And She's Still Out In The Community Working With Ness and Cultural Arts And Still Doing Stuff With Our Students In The Community. And We Wish Her A Lot Of Success And Well As She Travels On. With That Said, I Have A Few Others That I'd Like To Say Brief Words About On Behalf Of The Board. Obviously, We've Spoken To Jenna And Sydney. And We Wish Them The Best As They Continue On In Their Educational Journey. I'd Like To Take This Time To Thank Dr. Paul Doorward. He Has Been With Us For Three Years, And Three Years Or Four? Is It Four Years, Dr. Doorward? Three. Dr. Doorward Has Had The Opportunity But Shows That It Was Not His Area That He Wanted To Be Not Necessarily Involved In, But He Was Looking For A Different Type Of Position. As Many Of You Know, We've Restructured Our Administration, And We Have Shifted Some Positions And Titles To Better Serve What We Felt Were The Needs Of The District. Dr. Doorwood Has Spent The Last Three Years Helping To Organize Our Human Resources Office And Following Up With Licensing And Procedures And Things Of That Nature And Cleanup That We Needed At That Particular Time, And He's Done A Wonderful Job. We Thank Him For His Service. We Wish Him A Lot Of Success In His Future. And Any District Who's Willing To Hire, He's Available. Go Ahead. So We Thank You For Your Service, Dr. Doorward. I'd Like To At This Time Take An Opportunity To Thank And Congratulate On Her Retirement. I Think We Figured It Out That It Was Twenty-Eight Years. Mrs. Van Etten Has Served The School District As A Volunteer, As A Member Of The School Board. She Has Been A Board President, A Board Vice President. She Has Served By Being Our Representative To The New York State School Boards Association. In Addition, She Has Served At The County Level As Officers As Well As The Ability To Serve As Our Delegate In The Past To The Sullivan County School Boards Association. So We Thank Mrs. Van Etten For Her Wonderful Service. Again, We Did Send Her A Little Token On Behalf Of The Board And The District For All Of Her Work. And I Do Know That She Has Asked If She Could Say A Few Words. So Mrs. Van Etten, If You Can Unmute Yourself, Go Ahead.
Can You Hear Me?
Yes.
Thank You For Letting Me Speak For Just A Minute Or So, Very Short. It All Started With Mrs. Naomi Berkowitz When She Reeled Me Into The Elementary Classroom Mom. And Then Came The PTA And Sitting On District Committees. And Then The Current Board Member At The Time, As I Was Sitting In The Dentist Chair, Told Me That I Would Make A Good School Board Member. So First, I Have To And Wholeheartedly Thank The Monticello Central School District Community For My Election To The Board Of Education For Twenty-Seven Years. It's An Honor And A Role That I Have Cherished. And Second, I Have To Thank All The School Board Members That I'd Served With. Those In The Past, Those That Are Currently Serving, And Those That Are Going To Serve In The Future. I Learned So Much From So Many. I Would Also Like To Thank All Those In Central Administration, The Past And The Present, For Helping Me To Become A School Board Member Leader As President And Vice President For Several Years. I Started Out In Nineteen Ninety-Two With The Same Group Of Teachers Who Are Mostly Still Here. You Know Who You Are. I Can't Ever Thank You Enough For Your Support And Guidance In Making Me A Better School Board Member. The Rest Of The Staff, The Same Bus Drivers, The Maintenance Folks, The Cafeteria Employees, Security, Key Individuals For Our Operation. Thank You. One Of The Best Parts Of My Life Has Been A School Board Member. It's Part Of Who I Am Now, And It's Not Going To Go Away That Easy. So Don't Mess Things Up. My Best Thoughts Are For All Of You And The Continued Success For Our District. I Wish Our New Superintendent The Best. I Will Miss You, Miss These Meetings For The Most Part, And The Camaraderie That I Have Felt Here. My Granddaughter Reacted To My Statement That I Was Leaving The School Board After Twenty-Seven Years, And She Said, "Donna, Can't You Do Thirty?" After Speaking Of Her, It Reminds Me To Thank My Family. My Husband, John, Eli, Jen, Jack, Colleen, Grace, And Jim, And Most Importantly, Molly, Jake, Gus, Hazel, And Lydia. And John Says Twenty-Seven Years Is Really A Long Time. So Take Care Of Yourself And Each Other. Thank You.
Thank You Very Much, Mrs. Van Etten. We Thank You For Your Service. We Thank You For All That You've Done. And We Promise That At The Reorg Meeting, We'll Make Sure We Send You A Slice Of Pizza Considering That's What School Board Members Got. We Get No Pay. We Get, You Know, We Are Truly Elected Officials To Volunteer. And We Do It Because We Believe In What It Is That We Do For Our School And Our Community. And We Hope That The School And Community Appreciate What It Is That We Do. But On Behalf Of Our Board, We Do Appreciate Everything That You've Done, Mrs. Van Etten. We Wish You A Lot Of Health And Fun With Your Family. And You Know, You're Always Welcome To Come Back And Give Advice. So We Thank You Very Much For Your Service.
Thank You. Truly, Thank You.
And Then Lastly, But Not Least. Being In A School District When You Have To, You Know, Be There Is A Challenging Enough Position. Doing It Because Somebody Picks Up The Phone And Says, "I Know A Little Something And I Need A Little Help." And A Couple Of Coffee Meetings Later, Somebody Says, "I'm Happy To Be Your Interim Superintendent." This Board Has Transitioned A Lot. This School District Has Transitioned A Lot. And We Needed Somebody Who Could Sail Our Ship In A Good Direction. Dr. Silver Walked In Never Expecting An End Of A Year Like COVID. And He Did It With Grace, And He Did It With Humor, And He Did It With Care. And He Is, As We Say In Jewish, A True Mensch. We Appreciate Your Service. We're Going To Miss You. This Board's Going To Miss You. You've Taught Us A Lot. You've Taught Our School Community How To Come Back Together. And We Appreciate Everything That You Have Done. We Know That We Are Going Into Great Hands With Dr. Evans, And We Know That You Have Prepared Him Through This Transition During These Difficult Times. We Appreciate All Of The Hard Work You Have Done To Ride Our Ship And To Help Guide Us In The Direction That This District Can Continue To Do What It Needs To Do, Which Is Make Sure That We Are Doing What's In The Best Interest Of All Of Our Children And Our Community. We Welcome You, Dr. Evans, And We Know That You're Going To Do A Great Job. And Dr. Silver Is Always There To Give You A Guiding Hand Should You Need Some Because He's Learned A Lot About Our District This Past Year, And We Were So Blessed To Have Him. Dr. Silver, Our Heads Are Off To You. Enjoy Your Retirement.
Thank You, Lord.
Dr. Silver, I Don't Know If You Want To Say Anything, But I'm Going To Dry My Eyes.
Just A Thank You To You And The Board For Giving Me The Opportunity To Work With You And Serve The Monticello Community And The Monticello School District. I Hope That Things Work Out. Honestly, I Had Loads Of Fun This Year. You Were A Great Board To Work With. It Was A Pleasure. And I Couldn't Have Done It Without The Pandemic, But On The Side Of That, I Really Had A Good Time, And I Thank You So Much For The Opportunity, And Good Luck.
Thank You So Much, And I'll See You In Rotary World. So With That Said, And I've Now Dried All My Tears. Moving On From There. Anybody Have Any Questions With Regard To The Reports From All Of Our Administrators, Our Directors? Were On The Dock At This Meeting. Any Questions? Okay, So Policy Committee Memo. So Just A Reminder, These Are Changes That Needed To Be Made. Some Were Tweaking Of Title Changes, And Some Were Related To COVID. You Had Them In Our Last Packet. So Tonight, We're Going To Ask For Us To Approve Them But Also To Waive The Second Read Because Tonight Would Be The First Read Of Them. So Any Questions Around The Policy Committee Memo? Okay, moving on from there. Uh, we have no correspondence to follow up with. Capital project update, Dr. Silver.
Yeah, a few things. Um, the contractors mobilized amazingly quickly. They showed up last li- last Monday, and by Tuesday, they were up, almost tuning the 200 way and chewing up the the hardtop at the bus garage. Um, they're moving right ahead. We're in the middle of a specification statement that started this week at the high school. Um, and the the um, it it just at the beginning of their timeline, but they're right on it. Um, the uh, the specification, as everyone knows, um, it's very highly regulated. It's a complete containment field. Um, no, none of ours there for a lot anywhere near there. Um, there's separate entrances and exits, so there's no contact between the two. Um, it's under um negative pressure, negative pressure, so nothing can escape. There's a monitoring company and a testing company that's on site all day, every day. They're doing air quality testing twice a day to make sure there are no problems. And the place won't get unwrapped until all the air testing is clear, I think, in three days. I think is the is the limit. So that's moving ahead. Um, the the 200 Wayne, Steve Lewis said that it's completely demolished already, and and they actually have guys standing around waiting to do the same thing with the first floor. So um, we're in really good shape there, and I think that'll be perceived well. Um, bus garage, same thing. Um, they they mobilized. The hardtop is all gone, so they can start site work. They have to dig up the um conduit piping that's under there, and then they can start redoing that whole area. Um, as we know, the existing garage will stay in place until uh the next next spring or summer, when the new garage is done, and uh and we can move into that. Um, the buses will be parked at a rock green empty lot on the other end of town. And Steve's working with um the the county to store our sand and soil at their at their sites, so we don't have any problems with that. Um, so I think that's it for the the construction ground project at the moment. Um, the EPC is moving forward. Train continues to do the the work to um to get plans to get it for submission to SED. Um, the contract still wasn't ready for your approval tonight. Lawyers are so much fun. Um, but there doesn't seem to be a major hang up there. There's one appendix that has to be finished and attached to the contract, so I'm guessing that next week we'll have that contract to look at. And uh, I think that's all I have with the construction ones. Anyone has any questions?
Any questions around the table? Okay, so I do know that there are some people who are wondering what's going on at the bus garage. So hopefully now that has answered the question. So if anybody now says to you, "What are you doing over there?", you can say, "Go online." So uh, we thank you for that report. Uh, contingent budget and revote, Dr. Silver.
Um, this is this is just informational. Um, back in beginning of ju- beginning of June or May, I lost track already, the governor talked about a set of a a second opportunity for school districts budgets that go down. He identified either July 21st or 28th as possible dates for a revote. Um, I've been on the phone with NISCUS since last Sunday. Um, there were 11 districts around the the state stretching from Buffalo to Long Island whose budgets failed. Um, uh, NISBA and NISCUS have been have been in contact with um the governor's office in Danville, made recommendations for holding a second revote. Well, just a revote, not a second revote. And um, so far, there's been no word from the governor's office. The feeling was that he was waiting until after primary vote on this past Tuesday to see with the with their problems with in-person voting and the the COVID restrictions. Um, we're hopeful that we'll hear something by the end of this week or next week, so the board can plan. NISCUS and NISBA are recommending in-person voting with relaxed. Absentee ballot voting, unlike this last time where we sent that 13,000 absentee ballots. Um, and uh, the cost was more than double what it usually is for us to do a vote. There's no predicting what the governor will say or do. Um, the board, what we have before you tonight is a resolution for the board to adopt a contingent budget, so that we have authority to spend money um cast um uh ju- July 1, um, and also positions the board to have a revote, should they choose, should you choose to do so. If you like the conditions that the governor sets forward. If the board chooses not to have a a revote, they they start whatever reason, you'll you'll just need to um rescind the 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 resolution that hopefully you approve of later on in the meeting and uh adopt a contingent budget in a more normal manner. Um, so, um, Lisa and I are gonna talk a little bit about what 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 needs to come out of a contingent budget. We can do that later in the meeting or do it now. Your your choice.
So, um, I would say let's let's do it now because we're on the conversation of it, so.
Lisa, can I talk about the what a contingent budget is and what we won't be able to do with the rest of it?
So, the contingent budget law, we presented some information on it a few um meetings ago. But what it comes down to is any equipment cannot be purchased. So we lose about $938,000, which includes buses and um other equipment throughout the district, computers and and things like that nature. We cannot buy student supplies, supplies that are readily available. Um, the parents could purchase, like notebooks and pencils. That's about $18,000. And the administrative portion of the budget, which is, um, there's a three-part budget now. The administrative portion cannot be a greater percentage than it is in the current um fiscal year. So that's a reduction of $61,975. So the, and in addition, the tax levy and a contingent budget cannot increase over the current year's tax levy.
So, uh, thank you, Lisa, for that info. I just also want to share with the board that 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 also included in that are some requirements with regard to the fact that outside agencies would not be able to utilize our schools. And so everything that we worked so hard for this past year to allow schools to be opened and utilized because the taxpayers are paying taxes, not allowed. So um, so we would also l- lose that opportunity in a contingent scenario. So, um, with that said, are there any questions around the table with regard to that, Ms. Jersey?
So now that we have to have the same tax levy as last year, what's the, what would be the current percentage that would go on the contingency?
Current percentage?
Right, what would be the tax levy?
If if you don't do a revote and you adopt a contingent budget, the tax levy will remain the same as it was this school year. So there'll be no increase in the tax levy. That doesn't mean people's taxes won't go up, because equalization rates and assessments change. So, but the tax levy will remain the same. Cannot increase taxes.
Correct, okay. I just wanted to make sure, because people think that, because you have a contingency, your taxes aren't gonna go up, but it's just the tax levy. It's not the actual taxes. I wanted to point that.
People, people need to understand that there's a difference between a tax levy and a tax. The 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 tax levy itself and their taxes going up and down is based on the levy. It's not based upon the budget increase.
Correct.
It's not, you mean, it's based on equalization, not budget increase.
Right, which is the levy. The equalization, the equalization would be the issue, but a levy is what determines the the individual, because we have five different townships. We have, you know, all kinds of different things that go into that formula. Um, and I think that sometimes, you know, it takes school board members a very long time to understand the difference between the two, and we're intimately involved in it. So it's important that the community also understands. When we talk about that 2% cap, it's a formula. Um, I've learned tons from Lisa, and I was a school administrator. And I, until she came into my life, I was, it didn't make sense to me. So if you've got any questions about what that looks like, she she can put it down in salamence terms like nobody can. So thank you very much, Lisa, for that.
Thank you.
Um, anybody else with regard to the contingency budget and revote questions for Dr. Silver? Yes, Ms. Jersey?
So if we go to a revote, then what happens to the contingency budget? Can we override it?
What Dr. Yeah, what Dr. Silver said is is that.
The board would have to decide what budget to put up for a re- for a revote. It can be the same budget budget that was defeated last week, or it can be uh the same as the contingent budget, or it can be any anything you want. But you can go up, but you can go down. The amount of the budget can go down. It's completely up to the board. So we, of course, have several recommendations for you to consider um sh- once the revote possibility becomes real. Um, the 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 two other things I'd add is the the levy is the total dollars that the 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 district collects. The tax rate is what what happens to your individual house and your individual um town, community. So that's what goes up and down. Um, we would lose a little over $800,000 in revenue um if if we adopted a contingent budget. Um, on the expenditure side, um, with the equipment, we didn't buy any new school buses this past year because they weren't included in the budget. If we had the contingent budget, you can't do it. It puts us two years behind in a cycle. No one will notice for a little while, but seven or eight years out from now, when there'll be a big bump, we'll have eight or 10 buses need replaced at once. Uh, that will impact the budget very significantly. There are also um three, four or five vehicles um in the budget in addition to the buses for operations and maintenance. Um, a bus for our attendance officers and security and a driver's ed bu- I have a driver's ed car, which is on its last tires. So there's some some real impacts being on the contingent budget. And of course, shad- uh, overshattering all of this, this is the potential state aid cuts that we don't know anything about yet, but the governor says be up to 20%. So we can, we can manage a contingent budget pretty, I won't say well, well, but we can manage it. We can manage a a state aid cut of, you know, 10% or a little more or less. The two together will be very difficult, very challenging for the board to address those needs.
And the reality is, is no matter what it is that we do, it will affect our children. It will affect what we're able to do for our kids. Uh, ultimately, that becomes the issue. So, you know, there's a lot that needs to be said. You know, there were districts across the state that, of the 11 districts that tried to pierce their cap, seven of them did, because communities stepped up and realized. And we're gonna possibly get an influx based upon people who are coming through. Um, you know, if you've paid attention to what's going on, our property values um and people moving into our area has increased. Nothing I didn't say during when we were trying to get, you know, bond issues passed, when I made very clear that there was, on behalf of the board, that if we ever had another 9/11 or an incident like that, we could wind up in the same boat we were in back in 2001. Um, it's happened. Our numbers are increasing. They're coming up here. They're buying houses. They have children. They're going to need to come to school. Do you want them to come to a school that has the capabilities of um having a budget that's passed and has renovations and has space? Or do you want them to go to those outlying areas? Because that makes a difference on what happens to your home values. So, you know, it's it's a lesson learned, and we hope that the revote will come through. Um, and we have those opportunities as a board to have that dialogue around, is it a good idea? Isn't it a good idea? But um, they're here. They're here. We know that from what's going on in our kindergarten registrations. They're here, and uh, we're gonna have to educate them. And we're, no matter how this budget goes, we're gonna have to educate our kids, because that's what we do. So, uh, anyone who's listening to this, please keep that in mind and and share that info. Um, anything else around that information? Okay, so going from there, uh, no upcoming events of any, you know, major importance other than, oh, I don't know, graduation on on Sunday at 1 o'clock. Tune in. Uh, get the link online. Uh, the others are our meetings, our reorg meetings coming up, and everything else um is on hold. Uh, some things listed there for September. Uh, obviously, no community events, questions and comments from the public. Ms. Montez, do we have anybody who's tried to ask a question? Okay, thank you very much. So moving on from there, uh, Dr. Silver, uh, your report to the board, your final report to the board?
It's most of what I was going to say, the early parts of the agenda. What I do want to do is remind the public to complete their census forms. Um, uh, our our county is not doing it as well as the state. But um, we've only had, um, oh, let's see, 28% of the people complete their census forms as of two weeks ago. This is it. The census numbers are crucially important for the school district. That's how we get Title I funds, and crucially important for the county and for the state, because that's how this federal government allocates funds of all sorts to the states based on population. Um, these forms are not linked to any other data databases. Um, people shouldn't be be afraid of completing their forms. Um, so please do so if you possibly can. And um, that's really all I have that I haven't talked about already tonight.
Dr. Silver, is there any possible way that we could get a robo-call out to our families with regard to the census?
Yeah, we've done some earlier. We could certainly do another one. Um, before COVID, there were all these plans that computers available in the lobbies of the schools and the public library for people to come in and fill to do their census forms. You do it either online or by by mail. Um, but obviously, all of that fell apart, and all the outreach efforts normally would have been harassing our kids on a regular basis to remind their parents to do the census form. We can't do that very well either, so um, we'll do another robo-call and just spread the word, ask your neighbors.
Go get your haircut and do a census form, so.
In that order.
Thank you. Um, moving on from there, uh, any questions about the enrollment information? Okay, uh, Assistant Superintendent for Business and all of our wonderful updates. So, Lisa, we're so excited because we we know that there's a bid in here.
So you have your budget status and claims auditor and school lunch, profit and loss for April. There's a request to access some really, really old textbooks from the middle school. Uh, there's a request to access some technology that no longer works. I'm asking the board to extend the summer transportation contract we have with Rolling B for our students that attend the Center for Discovery. We got a um letter to yesterday or the day before that says that they may have limited face-to-face instruction at the Center for Discovery. We don't have a list of if any of our kids are impacted, but I wanted to be prepared with a contr- transportation contract in case we do have to send students over there. Um, if we don't, we don't have to, we won't pay for anything. So it's, there's no harm. It's just making sure that we get all of our aid if and when we have to use it. And that's, that's my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions around that? Okay, so, um, moving on from there. Uh, Dr. Doorwood spoke to us earlier about the code of conduct. So again, just remind everybody with regard to that. The other thing that Dr. Doorwood um has issued out to the school board, I just want to remind everybody, and we will be putting it up on the website, is uh the school safety plan that we also have to approve. Um, there is a 40-day open period from the time that it makes the website, so we'll be approving it uh at a later meeting. Uh, but I just want to make people aware of the fact that, um, you know, we have reviewed what we need to review on it at this point, um, and that it's ready for publication. So do I have a kind of a knot of heads across the the table, so Dr. Doorwood knows that that can go up tomorrow? Terrific, so you've got our approval, Dr. Doorwood. Ready to go on that. Uh, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, Dr. Oler Marks.
Great, thank you. So, uh, just a couple of quick things uh that I wanted to highlight in the memo that I um sent. The first is that we are busy coordinating professional development for the summer and curriculum development. Obviously, we have a lot of work to do to prepare for the many eventualities of um the start of the school year, not the least of which is ensuring that we are filling any potential gap. not the least of which is ensuring that we are filling any potential gaps in loss of learning for our students. We're also expending a good deal of effort in having a lot of technology support for teachers over the summer. And then in some of our new programs, we're doing open court. As you know, we adopted that, so we have training for that. We continue to work on Orton-Gillingham training for the goal of having all of our K-2 and AIS elementary teachers trained in that. We're also offering for Orton-Gillingham the opportunity for some of our middle and high school teachers, since the comprehensive course goes for grades 3 through 12. So we have two very full virtual sessions that will be going in July and August for Orton-Gillingham. Additionally, we have three teachers who were selected to be part of the Hudson Valley Writing Project's Teacher Leadership Program. We're very excited about their participation, and I'll give you updates as to what they're doing across the school year, to a year-long process. And we have some teachers who are participating in their week-long institutes this summer. Additionally, we have a few teachers that are working with Bard in the Writing and Thinking Summer Program, and will be sharing out, as with anything else that we do, and we send teachers to any kind of training. Part of the agreement of what we do is that we're building capacity so that they can come back to district and train the teachers in what they have learned. And finally, we're doing training with Lynda Mubeau, which is some very specific kind of small group intervention training around language acquisition. And so we've got a number of teachers that have been engaged in that over the last few weeks and moving on to next week. The other thing I wanted to highlight is that the results of our digital equity audits. We had talked a lot about when we first, the school buildings closed, how many kids did have access. I know that we've had updates as to how many devices that we passed out. But we had ongoing questions about internet access. And so this is the results of the final audit that we did with families. And so when families had earlier told us that they did not have access, we did follow up with phone calls in order to ascertain why, what was the biggest reason that they had no access. And then we also audited staff. And this information was uploaded to the state. It was part of what the state had asked us to report. Questions about any of that?
Ms. Jersey?
What's the difference between a district one-on-one device and an other district device?
Yeah, that's a great question. Okay. So typically, when we talk about one-to-one devices, we all think that one-to-one means that those devices go home. With students, we made a deliberate decision in this district when we went one-to-one, the devices at that time would not go home. So we are a one-to-one district for grades 4 through 7 currently, which means that every student in those grades has their own device that they use at school. So those are one-to-one devices. So for our other students in 8 and up, and then K-1, 2, 3, we had devices that we made available for families that requested, so they could get a laptop or a tablet or an iPad to be made available to them.
Any other questions around the table? Thank you, Dr. Oler Marks.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Sheriff?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we take action items U-1 to U-10 and U-12 together as a group.
Seconded by... So Mr. Crumley, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? So ordered. Mrs. Sheriff?
I move that we approve action items U-1 to U-10 and U-12.
Seconded by... Ms. Jersey, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? So ordered. Mrs. Sheriff?
I move that we approve action item U-11 via roll call vote.
Seconded by... Ms. Holmes, any discussion? Ms. Montez?
Tim Crumley?
Aye.
Oh, she's not here. Wendy Galligan?
Aye.
Jennifer Holmes?
Aye.
Helen Jersey?
Aye.
Lori Orsano-James?
Aye.
Stacy Sheriff?
Aye.
And Alice Vannan? So Alice, you have to take yourself off mute.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Moving on to correspondence. Again, there's all the record articles and Democrat articles that have been uploaded. There's news story link that's been uploaded. And in executive context, there was a thank you note from the Housman family for our note to them. So, you know, take a look at the note. It's lovely. And moving on from there, questions and comments from the public? Anything on there, Janet?
Nope.
Okay, thank you very much. So with that said, Dr. Silver, again, we thank you for all of your service, Mrs. Vannan. We thank you for all of your service to our retirees. Thank you for everything that you've done for our students. To Jenna and to Sydney, we thank you for all that you've done. And with that said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn made by... Making it by Mrs. Vannan. It's her last motion. Seconded by... Ms. Galligan, any discussion? Just a reminder, don't forget to tune in for graduation on our YouTube channel. The link is available on our district website starting tomorrow. All in favor of adjourning? Very much welcome aboard, Dr. Evans. Thank you, motions and passes, and we welcome you aboard, and good night to everybody. Thank you.
Night, everyone. Good luck, Alice.